I'd like to thank the board for this wonderful day, and we're going to thank you for this city. We ask of each of you that this day, by us, lead us in progress, and give people great amen.
Okay, we'd like to have everybody stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Eric Wallen.
Here.
Chad Vienna. Ruth Anne Jones. Joseph Fleisch.
Here.
John Atkins. I want to do the start of the approval of minutes for June. Does anyone have the opportunity to review? And do I have no comment to accept?
Agreed.
Jeff. All the things say aye for your votes. Is there anybody who's new on the list? Jalaja or Brady, okay. How was being worked on? You saying a lot of shit at that. So at this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing for PC dash two zero two five zero two dash zero zero one. Request to rezone one point three three acres from R one to a C two, located on the southeastern side of US Highway seven oh one south. Um, there's a few people that have signed up, um, to talk. Um, when you come up here to say something, if you please introduce yourself and limit what you want to say to three minutes, because it looks like you have a good crowd. So would Gary Van like to come first? Gary, that's good.
I'm sorry. Yeah, please.
Would you like to come to the podium?
Well, yes, I do. I would, I would.
Okay.
But I'd like to know first, let's plan for that property over there. That's, we can get that spoken to everybody.
Oh, yeah. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could come forward, can you tell us?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Gary Wallace, and my husband Gary and I are the property owners of that seven oh one property we're rezoning today. We're, we're HVAC business owners in Loris and senior pastors of H R Life Center in Loris as well. Thank you for the opportunity to present our request for rezoning our property to C two, commercial and general use. As it was originally intended and identified, we purchased the property in two thousand twenty-two as a C tone, C two property, according to the zoning map records on the Loris website and the Ori County website, the real estate ad, and as a result of our due diligence, with the intention of building our HVAC business, which we've been in business for twenty-two years, in which the planning department and Meredith were all on board for it. As I said, it was only maps and our due diligence indicated the C two status, and that's why we purchased it. We have documentation supporting that back in that time that it was shown in the C two. We later decided to table our construction and rid the building in Loris for now, and then put the property for sale with a C two zoning in two thousand twenty-four. We immediately received an offer, as this area is prime real estate location in Loris. Very long seven oh one leads directly into downtown section of Loris from Conway. After further research and more due diligence, the city and Ori County, the city and Ori County, a discrepancy was discovered in the zoning paperwork back from two thousand three and two thousand four, which showed a signed document from council of R one status, but also reflecting the C two paperwork attached to that. Thus prompting the rezoning need to make the correction. As you can see from the new and current zoning map, which is on the website now, that's the map company switched from two thousand twenty-two to now. It was updated and showing that the neighboring properties are showing a C two as well, and ours is showing nothing and is defaulting back to R one, which was an error based on all the paperwork, except for the one document that was signed. Maybe, I don't know, how it was, was missing signed as R one error. Property zoning will invite others to desire to develop in the area, especially with the neighboring locality and the potential to develop. It also aligns with the city's economic development plan that you guys submitted or put out uh, a couple months ago for everyone showing how the city is growing, but still staying that small town atmosphere as well. And we do have a potential buyer, a buyer in contract, who is willing to or ready to invest in the property under the C two designation, because that's how we were selling it as, because that's what our information showed at the time. Our buyer is here. He does not have any intentions at this time to confirm what he's doing with it. It's just investment property at this time. Uh, there's rumors, of course, that Taco Bell and Walmart and all those things, but none of that is anything that's happening. So there's no development plan at this time. We're just trying to get this back to the C two so that it can be general use or commercial. For example, like a, we were going to do the HVAC building, something of that sort. Um, the city's development plan encourages diversified land use, economic expansion, and sustainable growth. A C two designation will foster new business opportunities while maintaining the residential appeal in that area. The potential buyer plans to develop the property in a way that enhances local economy, and he's already been in contact with Meredith and is working with her closely when he has, when that plan eventually happens. Um, approving the rezoning request will support the city of Loris's long-term economic goals, provide immediate investment, and contribute to a thriving community. I grew up in Ori County. We've lived here in Loris for thirteen years. We've been doing the HVAC business in Ori County for twenty-two years. We love the city, support the growth, but we appreciate the small town community. So we're not, we're not looking to do, you know, all the rumors that you hear and that kind of thing. But we love the city and support the growth, and we appreciate your time and consideration. If you have any questions, just be free to ask me. And I have the documentation for, um, the new map, which you probably already can see in there, they already have. And I have screenshots in my phone of two thousand twenty-two, and it was zoned as C two. In the era that was named.
So what you got there is the ordinance that she's referring, a copy of the ordinance she's referring to, and then the summary sheet that was done summarizing the properties of our annex, acreage, and the zoning district types of years. I think it's got two, three, you know, four on that sheet. Um, and in your slides is the, this is actually a screenshot of the map on the wall. That was our previous on the map, somewhere around two thousand seventeen, showing what she was referring to as far as it's showing C two. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And this time, we'll get public comments. And Gary Van, is that clear? Have you signed up? Top on the list?
I want to call my name.
Okay.
I want to thank the board for coming this year and actually this week. I thank our neighbors for coming here to give a conversation or agreement. I'd like to start with something, well, I've been here for thirty-seven years. Finished physician in town, I see Loris. I have two years to give and maybe two to come to Loris. Two years, but they never got rid. I'm still here, and I intend to stay here too. I'm going to start with something we all can agree with, regardless of where you stand on this issue. We need more roads. We need better roads. I think everyone can agree to that. What we don't need, we don't need more congestion on seven oh one. For thirty-three years, the same as that young man, handsome young man sitting there is, I've been drawing it in and out onto our property on the seven oh one, and it can come very precarious. Sometimes you have to wait, pretty much in measure when out of time, to cross that road and get on that road. As you probably know, there's a dip in the road built south. A lot of times you can't tell that traffic. You've got to coordinate the traffic on both sides coming and going. And again, it's the last thing seven oh one needs in our district and our area is more traffic. And what it's also, what the intentions are for that property, there's no room for it. To be safe and to be sound and to be secure in our roads, that we don't need more traffic until we get better roads and more roads. I think we can all agree with that. So that's why we're protesting and we're changing that designation of that property that would cause more congestion. We're not ready for it. We don't want it, and it can be hazardous. And I'm sure everyone can appreciate that. I want to thank the board for letting you talk. I want to thank my neighbors for coming. There's no malice towards anyone, but this is to appreciate exactly what we need to stay safe and sound. We need it until there are other things that are developed, whatever is going to come that property. And I thank you. And I thank my neighbors.
Renee, would you like to?
Okay, there. It's Mary's wife and Madison's son. I want to thank you guys for the things you have seen, you have our, um, opinions heard. So thank you all. Really appreciate you being everybody that's here. We live there. I mean, I was eight months pregnant with my son, he's seventy-four. So we've been there for a long time. Our neighbors have been very supportive, and it's really been a wonderful place to live. And so we are jacking, you know, because it was not listed as commercial. We've been there all these years. We've never been notified that anything's changed. So I just wanted to express my knowledge or whatever, if there are, this paperwork or whatever, I'd like to get provided with.
Thanks, and I'm good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And Susan, would you like to?
My name is Madison Barrett. You just heard from both of my folks, so I will keep it short and sweet. I don't do the people they've always said. Uh, I've spent my entire life in the house that's across the road from this property. Um, you know, it's a beautiful property, and I just wanted to note, uh, kind of the geography around it. This piece of property in question is surrounded on, by residential houses on three sides. Our property, which is across the road, is a piece directly adjacent on seven oh one. And this house is right behind it, and then the four sides. It simply does not make sense to put commercial property in that area. It's not going to be good property values. There's going to be noise pollution, ground pollution. It's not going to be popular with any of the neighbors there. You know, so I don't know about legality or anything like that, but it's just not popular for the people that are currently doing it. Um, not to mention the fact that the parcel is not on a corner. It is in the middle of a section of fields. Um, so I just don't even know how that's going to work feasibly. Um, and really, it's just, you know, especially for example, you know, if it was a HVAC business, I don't want trucks showing up every morning at six AM, uh, you know, and I have to listen to it. Selfish or not, that's just the reality of the situation. Nobody wants that in neighborhood. So it simply does not seem like a good fit to me with the properties that are around it. Uh, and I'd love to keep living on a farm that feels like a farm, not a downtown. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Hey, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Is there? Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Martin Blanton. I own the property right beside the property question here and the land behind it. I just have a couple of just big questions. Why are we having a hearing on rezoning in Loris? This is not Loris. Unless y'all done something I'm not aware of, we are not annexed. So why are we having a hearing here instead of the courthouse in Conway? First question I have.
So it's surrounding as well, that this one parcel is going to save the other.
What word is it? Uh, so if y'all, so if y'all can do that, you can, you can annex my property without telling. That's, that's ridiculous. You annex land and don't tell anybody about it? Where did that come from?
According to the paperwork that we've been provided back in two thousand, two thousand three, before, none of us were on this one, this, that it was before the city of Loris and the owner of that property requested that it be rezoned.
Yeah, but then?
And extended to the, the, the city of Loris.
So, so the city annexed it without letting anybody else know? So what would you prevent? What would prevent the city from annexing our property?
We don't know that, because like I said, the records don't show that.
Well, who, who'd be telling anybody? If you get, I'm, I'm here to find out what to do. There's any other thing. According to the land records in Ori County, the land in question is one point one nine acres, not one point three three. Look on the land records, and they're all kind of squiggly lines. What's that about?
That is something.
Look up the land records, look up eight oh one highway seven oh one south. Look at the property beside it, adjacent to this land, and you will see there's a squiggly line in it. What does that mean? Eight oh one highway seven oh one south, Loris.
Are you referring to a dash line?
Yeah, what is that?
That's the city land boundaries. Is the overlay.
So we got a piece of property in the middle of the field, and it's Loris property, and the rest of us are not Loris property. That's the most ridiculous thing I have ever heard of, because my wife's not blaming y'all. It's crazy. It makes sense.
We understand what you're saying.
It doesn't make sense. So without knowing what kind of property is going to be next to my land and behind it, again, neighbors are here, family members, there's no way in the world I could support this. No way. And tell me what's going there. And I could. Well, well, tell me what's going there. Is it going to be residential property? Is it going to be a food line? Is it going, see, that's, that's going to ruin my land there, and it's going to ruin the rest of the people who live there. It's always, it's always been residential, and I hope it remains residential. If the city of Loris wants a Taco Bell or something, there's plenty of land here in Sibley, Loris. But, uh, I just don't like the way it's been handled. I don't like the squiggly lines. I don't like the fact that this land was annexed in the city of Loris without other people knowing about it, adjacent to it. That is, shall I say, asinine. It's not the way to do business. So with that said, no way I can support it. I'm sorry. And whatever we got to do to stop it, that's all we're going to do. Thank you, Captain.
We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to vote? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is John Collins. I live in the house directly behind the property. I've been there since nineteen ninety-eight. And as far as I know, that property has always given designated farm use or upgraded to residential. Now, I've been there for, since ninety-eight, and I've never seen any notification of rezoning any kind of property. I don't know, uh, Ms. Mark is the one that owned that property, and, uh, I was never told to leave, or any of the people around that she had that property or requested it to be annexed. So if you could look on your paperwork and see who's made the request for that property to be annexed, that might clear up a few.
Right.
Trying to. The, the property has always been open. And, you know, if that property wasn't C two at the time they purchased it, why are they waiting three years later to convert it to a commercial property and then try and sell? When they could have done it right after they, right after they bought.
Apparently, you just heard that. It was a C two. We bought it as a C two.
Well, see, I haven't had anybody say.
The property around it's a C two.
I'm talking, sir, if you don't mind. Lewis, I want to come up here and talk. I'll be more than happy to.
It is not C two. It is, no, it's, it's.
The problem is, it's, it's never been, there's, I've never heard of any notification of rezoning that property to C two. And if somebody listed it wrong, it's not our fault. It's not the neighbor's fault. It's probably their fault, or the realtor that, that sold them the property or conducted the, uh, buy. But, yeah, this, I don't want to have to put up trees, because, you know, they're going to have air-conditioned units all over the place, and you're going to have to put up a fence. And I don't want to view the backside of a commercial building with a fence that I'm going to have to put up trees just to block that, that fence view. So, you know, it's going to be an hassle. I want to look out my front door and see the highway, see the fields. You can see Duncan Barrett's house. I don't want to look at, at a row of trees blocking, uh, changing things. So I request that, that y'all turn down this rezon and let it be as commercial. Because if he wanted it to be a commercial, he'd have done it right then and there when he found out. Now he's wanting rezoned to commercial, he's got a for sale sign on. And all that's going to do is just jack up the price, and he's going to make one. And he's going to leave us hanging the bag, dealing with a piece of commercial property that nobody wants to see back.
We appreciate your input. Thank you. Okay.
In two thousand twenty-two?
Can you come up?
Yes. In two thousand twenty-two, when we purchased the property, the zoning says C two, that's why we purchased it. We had the sign up there that we were going to be building the HVAC. We just chose not to. Just this last, last three months is when we decided to put it up for sale as C two, because that's what we spent thousands of dollars on buying it as, because of that, or we would have never bought it in the first place. Um, the zoning map from Loris in two thousand twenty-two shows C two. The second paperwork from Martha Ray shows two thousand twenty-two, or shows C two back in two thousand thirty. It had two readings, and then that's where the error, where it was entered as R one instead of C two. Um, and, and it extended to the city. Um, no one's intending to build any type of Taco Bell or anything like that. We spent lots of money on this land, and it was indicated as C two according to the maps. So now we're trying to sell it as it was appropriately put into the system as. And so if anybody's losing out, it's us in that, in that case. Because now we just have to put a, a line in that possibly would say is residential.
Thank you. Okay, um, yes, ma'am. You can come forward and state your name.
My name is Teresa Blanton. I'm Mike's wife. Mike, my name, you just spoke a few minutes ago. Um, I can say that this land's always been important to me, because I've lived in that land for seventy-five years. And it is home, and always will be home. But one of the questions that I have is that the brochure that we got, I guess, um, here about this rezoning program, it said that you'll rezone one point thirty-three acres. My question is, why does the land records in Ori County say that it's one point nineteen acres?
It's coming from the records from, um, the, we, it's, 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 you know, it could have since two thousand three, seven, they were in lock and some, which would lose some acres for any of the forces. One, seven, one. But it's still, that zoning still tied to that, right with it. Anything that would be built there, we would have to, in order for us to be issued a permit, regardless of what use, they would have to mark the property first. We would have to have the exact acreage, because that depends, that essentially depends what square footage they could even have a house on, even if it is.
So what is the correct acreage?
Well, we can't answer that right now. We're going to, we're going to make ourselves some notes. We're going to check in some, uh, some, uh, books.
And one thing I'd like to say to the community, they're not the only losers. If they don't, if you don't rezonate or if you do, there's going to be some losers, because that, I mean, that land's important to a lot of people in here. I think.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please, sir, if you can, if you can.
I want to take up where Mr. Blanton was talking about, and you're talking about that one parcel of property that's been annexed into the city.
Yeah, could you please state your name?
On Martha Henry, we have a property on the opposite corner of seven oh one from the field that this is on the same side of the road. And, uh, and I have a question, that is, why in the last few months has the city limit sign been moved from around Meadow Road to the backside of South? It's about six months ago it's been moved.
This parcel would be the furthest south on seven oh one that's annexed into the city, but that was annexed in as part of the railroad, had been annexed in certain, you know, it, it tracks, so it's, it'd be that, actually, back in.
The best city limit sign now sits on the backside of our park, which is seven oh one on H two. And I was just coming home from Conway one day, and I'm like, what the heck's the city limit sign doing here? We were never notified about that here. So as would the other people, we're low density there. We're so low density that everybody has acreage. Not just houses next to each other, like Southwoods. We have acreage. We have twenty acres, thirty, forty acres. And that's the way we want to keep it on our road, and we consider that field part of our neighborhood and part of our street too. And I'm talking about Lily Lane there. So we kind of want to keep it that way, especially if we have no idea what could be coming in there. You know, we have animals, but we have a lot of dogs, and if there's some kind of class food joint there with food straps going in the dumpster, my dogs have twenty-three acres, and now I'm going to have to keep them locked up all the time, because dogs can smell a long way. And they'll be out there, because that's what dogs do, you know? So we have to worry about our dogs and, and things like that, so, yeah. It'd be nice to know what the plans are before you change the zoning office. Do that piece of property so that you can have a voting and some discussions there.
I got, got one more question. Now, uh, John Collins, and, and the question I have is, when that property was annexed by city of Loris, okay, I'm assuming Martha Ray is one of the requests to be, be that way. Now, when, when that property was annexed, how did the city of Loris classify that piece of property? Did that, was it classified under residential or commercial?
Correct. So the ordinance itself, um, says the R one, and that's essentially where this confusion has come from. Is the annex, the annexation ordinance itself says R one. Shortly after, whenever they were doing that, some.
Shortly after, whenever they were doing that summary sheet is where that C two got switched. And it's still mapped that way as C two, um, since.
Now, my question is this, now, when, when the report was annexed, it was not, my understanding, it was not zoning commercial. And that would have been, that would have been by the count. All right, so when, so when Lawrence annexed it, can you tell me the date when y'all had a rezoning meeting to have a rezon?
We'll have to look into that because I don't have that paper.
Because I, I think that's going to play a major role here is because a lot of it seems like it was switched. But nobody's really provided any solid answer in regard to how or when it was switched. All we got is just basically a guess. And if it was, you know, yeah, if it was done in a manner that doesn't, is not reflective of the way it actually should have been done. Then, you know, you can't, can't just like, let's fix it and change it to a commercial and not take into consideration everybody who lives around the, the zoning properties. That's, that's my two cents right there in regards to that.
I appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing, if that's okay. I think that must have been needed. Um, in 2022, when we bought the property, the current owner was Martha Ray that they're discussing. And she's the one that was the owner, the creator that adhered to when we sold it. And her realtor and her, whoever was representing outlet, what marked it as 1.3 acres of mixed-use land and, um, possibilities abound, access to the city of Loris, um, that it is, um, commercial or residential as that mixed-use C two zoning. So Martha knew according to her selling that and putting this document in the real estate on it because you're falsifying if you're doing that incorrectly, um, that it was mixed-use and not listed as residential. So there again shows that her intention back in 2003, 2004 was to have C two. That's why half of the map and the one paperwork says C two, just that there was an error when it was actually signed by the council. So her name is the one who put, who put the ad out there in 2022, which made us notice about it because of the mixed-use. So now because there was the error, again, by all this is happening. Thank you.
Okay, so if anyone else in the audience would like to.
I just want to add one little thing to her comment again. You know, if, if Martha, if Martha did do something that was kind of like unrecognizable. You know, if this thing fails, maybe they need to go take some action against Martha and not make dust paper. Okay? Because, yeah, it's just. I mean, I thought it was kind of ridiculous the price that she was asking for again, you know, because I was always under the impression that it was residential or basically farm. Because, you know, right now we got a farmer that lives back on Lily Lane. We used to farm the whole front section and since that thing got pieced out or knocked out, cut out, that farmer no longer takes care of that, those pieces of property, that farm. And so I have to go out there sometimes and help Mr. Mike cut his field because the farmer used to cut that. And, and, and the field on the other side is no longer being taken out and that's just grown a hot mess right there. And, and right now, the property just looks bad right now. And if, if that, you know, if that property is, is kept residential like it was back in the past, you know, maybe the farmer could, could start working. He's not going to work when he's got an acreage right smack dab in the middle, he can't, can't deal. So, we got a mess out there right now. And like I said, if, if, if this thing falls through, maybe he needs to go talk to Martha and send legal assistance.
We appreciate everybody's input and his not going for death ears. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, I'm still concerned about the squidly lines business. Yeah, squidly line, uh, part of that squidly line is on my property. And I'm not going to pay any taxes, city taxes. So I don't know, we put it on there, we wasn't advised, we wasn't called, we didn't receive a letter. So it's on my, it's on my land, good luck and get the tax.
Okay, is there anyone else?
What's your map of the annexation of, of what y'all are calling the city property now? Because none of us out here off Lily Lane have a clue here. So you just took the road except that one lot.
My understanding, the way the annexation goes, the property is going to be requested.
Oh, I'm talking about those city annexations.
Okay, I have a question. Okay. Okay.
I just have a question, you know, since we kind of do this living. Now, I'm concerned, what are the city limits? I mean, where are, where's the, where's the line for the city?
So as far as a parcel goes, this parcel is the one that's further south. Um, at some point, and I have to go back and pull the ordinance to see exactly where, um, the railroad company annexed certain portions along the Triad, I can't remember which it was, X number of miles. North, south of a certain point, was they determined that, but there is a, like, um, the county's G I S. And that railroad track a lot of, and it will show more or less the properties that are annexed into the city.
Yeah.
And that's how this property ended up being annexed into the city is it was contiguous to railroad tracks that were in the city.
So how, how do we find out? I mean, because there's, um.
I mean, like, this is our property, you're saying it's in the city name. Yours, no. The one across the street is? This one happens to be, they annexed in based on the contiguous to railroad tracks that was annexed into the city. So that's one of the.
And our property is wrapped directly on the side. Railroad tracks are on our side of the road. So that doesn't make any sense to us.
Well, the, the road is essentially, it was an easement. You removed the, um, you removed the road itself and went back to the original points, the original course for it. That's what it looks at, is that a road cannot make a contiguous or make an odd continuous. And every property's across the street. State statute would determine that because there being that street does not make or break being contiguous to.
So they're in the city limits, but they're not and we're right across the road from each other, is what you're saying?
So, so a road council is an easement, but a real.
Railroad line.
I guess I don't understand that one.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just want to say one thing.
Does he keep hearing?
No, that's what I was going to tell you, is that I'm at that age that I can't hear. And when y'all were talking up there, like, her back is turned to us and she's talking to you and I don't know a word you said while I was there. I'm sorry, but I'm having a hard time hearing.
Yeah. So whoever comes up in the future, just talk a little bit louder. So at this time, you're going to close our public hearing? We're going to move on to the business items?
Yes.
And first business item is us to discuss P C two oh two five oh two dash zero zero one, recommendation regarding zoning district and zoning waste. So does anybody have any input questions from the council? Okay, so Eric is saying we need more information. We've got several questions I have on my list that we need to answer.
My question is, was it determined it was definitely a scribbler's error?
One or the other is. And that, that has happened before. I even had one which pulled back in the internet, so I had the council go back and fix the annexation because it noted it says it is R one point four where it should have been R one point seven.
Right.
Um, since this, since any property was annexed in under R one, R one alone no longer exists. We have three different ordinance. So technically, without some type of actual current zoning district assigned to it, we have no way of determining the setbacks for it. Um, you do know that as far as the C two also does allow all residential uses. It is not restricted to only commercial. And, um, this also goes, that was with our future land use maps. Shows you don't want as many residential because of the dryness along the main corridors, which would be, say, nine bypass, we would get that far, we're close to actually the trash lot. Um, some of your main street, some parts of main street as you're going out of town and then your 701 route in Southwood. You wouldn't want driveways to say like they've done at Southwood where you've gone back to that with it. And the surrounding properties, um, to this particular, are actually under Orange County's C M A zoning district, which is now retired as well.
I, I totally agree with them about, we need, we'll get into a lot more about when this transpired and about when it went from county to city, that was your annexation work.
So, yeah, this was with the rezon, you annexed it and it gets the zoning designation. So it's essentially both the same. Where is the root?
At very least, we, you mentioned some of the state statutes. We write, you can have that stuff in the text. And property line, you know, in terms of, to make sure it's all sort of, let's get this squidly line worked out too.
Amen. And amen.
That is a layer that Orange County does, um, and if you go to pull up their land records for G I S, there's a button in the chat to click on that says, basically they're saying, don't take this for fact with it. Go back and check, do your homework, do your searches with it, it's going to be good. They've even said that layer, they put on the map, which essentially is the city limits and it's going to be for anywhere. May or may not line up specifically to that parcel. But if you click that parcel, it's going to tell you what, where it says district and it's a three-digit code. That is the tax district, that will tell you whether it's the municipality or it's not. Irish happens to be two twenty and industrial is two twenty one.
We have to make a motion to table this with further information?
If, if, if it fails to make a motion, that can be taken.
Yes, sir.
Just one question, if, if you table it and you bring it up at another session, are you going to advise, you're going to put up another notice?
There will be, um, they post, the city laws post a hundred days before me.
So whenever we post a property, we by law have to post at least 15 days before. Um, the county, um, city council also with all rezonings holds their own public hearing. If we were getting changed as well, yeah.
But, but just, just to, just to make sure, you know, since you've tabled it, you know, I don't want it to squeak by without, you know, the, the, uh, people knowing about it. Because it's already been, you've already had a meeting on it and you tabled it. I just want to make sure that there's going to be a continuation of this meeting when it's brought back up and there's going to be another action.
We normally meet before Thursday, except Thanksgiving, Christmas, what that. So that's good that you know. But, um, website, the city laws website, and I think they posted on the others. And with the yellow and red signs, you know, so the yellow.
Physically, it was hard.
Yeah, so you hear that, the signs.
Yeah, yeah, I heard.
Yeah.
I have a question, so we have to go online to find out this information or will we get another notice in the mail?
We go the same ways, this will be it, so property would get posted and letter would be adjacent properties would get sent by mail.
So, just so that everybody heard that, the property will get posted in letters to the landowners surrounding it. Y'all will get a notification.
Ma'am, just one other question in terms of annexation, what is the process that the city annexes land?
I'm going to let Meredith tell you that, she's the person in charge of that.
So, when? First, a petition has to be made to city council for the property to be annexed into. I'm not in the city, but I want to become part of it. So I petition and it's a simple, I fill it out, sign it, and I give it to council. Council refers that annexation request to planning commission for zoning district determination. Once planning commission makes a recommendation and there's certain time limits with some of it, um, it goes directly back to city council. City council will have the first reading. If the first reading passes, then they will have, um, a second reading, but they'll have a public hearing prior to that second reading meeting.
And that's notification, right?
With that, so that's.
I would simply like to know back in 2003, where the input came from the community on this annexation?
There's got to be some records, some minutes.
I find it hard to believe that a lot of people sitting around here that's been there forever would have been at that meeting. I don't think there was any input from the community there or any, anybody.
It should, yeah, I'll put it that way. The zoning, the current zoning ordinance that we have predates this annexation. I think it was passed about ninety-eight, ninety-nine. So unless that part changed a little bit, and then you had the. Basically, your components of planning, requirements, the state statute along the way amended in 2003. I believe it said, you had to read this, this, this. And that's essentially what a lot of our bylaws and everything comes from, is that language is based on the state statute with that. So there is certain procedures, um, I can't necessarily speak on back in 2003. Um, I can't go back and try and pull the minutes with that as far as the number of this one based on the dates when council had the first reading, second reading for it. Um, it is all paper documents typed in, so that will take a little bit of time to try and pull it. Um, and seeing whatever, whatever was noted in those minutes.
Is, is that information going to be presented at, at the, the next meeting for this particular part?
Yes, absolutely.
I just want everybody in the audience to know that spoke up, we, it has not fallen on deaf ears. This council, we really are very conscientious of your concerns on all sides. And, um, we are going to look into this so that we can make a great decision. Yes, sir.
Are there different grades of commercial, like there's different grades of residential? You've got low density, high density housing, is there different grades to commercial zoning as well?
Is there a different grade to commercial zoning as well?
In the city of Lawrence, there is, and the county, there is, correct? Yes.
Because general, general, commercial sounds like anything in the world could go there. And if this property is in the city limits, y'all would have a say on what grade of commercial it could be rezoned to?
That is something, you know, the list that has all the different grades, that is something that the applicant will pick out which one they're seeing.
But he could say he wants it for this and you say no, but we'll accept it for this. Is there a like a compromise there or anything?
I understand. Okay. Did I answer your question, sir? I mean, if you want to know, you live in the county, if you want to know the different things, I would recommend going to the county courthouse.
But this is, this is Lawrence City London property.
Well, that one, yes, but your.
Well, I'm not worried about my property in all her self. Hey, is is there any way to look up the property, uh, the taxes that's been paid on the property? And I'm talking about uh, property taxes that City of Lawrence has collected on the property? Or when they started collecting? And how, and how that property tax amount was uh, uh, how how you achieved, how you assigned, what kind of property it was in regards to amount of tax that you collect on?
So your question is, is can a person look up how much a person has paid um, city taxes on their property?
Yes.
Like if you're able to look at this particular property.
Yes.
I understand that, yes. I think you go to the county courthouse.
So you go on the county's website, um, and pull up the, they only go back ten or eleven years. Um, as far as the tax payments. The way that they tax it is, it's not going to be based on the zoning district. It's going to be based on the current use. So even if a parcel was F A, C one, C two residential, if it's sitting there vacant, if there's nothing there, it's going to be taxed as they, no matter what was on the district.
Okay, well, I was just, I just figured that you could go back when Lawrence started collecting taxes on it. Then we could, we could nail down the exact time that it was supposedly annexed into the town of Lawrence.
I don't think we were as computerized as we are now.
Well. I'll let the fingers do the walking.
That's right. Okay, so we're going to table that after we get questions into. The next item is item two zero two four one two dash zero zero one. Request to reconsider the renaming of the unnamed street near Dallas Street. Okay. Like, okay, comments, my understanding, the question is here. The person that requested to have it.
Yeah, I came late, I didn't sign you on.
That's okay.
I'm Reese Young, I'm Charlie Watson, friends thing. And the estate we're talking about is the Charlie Watson estate. Last time we was here, it was a historical name, whether the Charlie Watson was only. And after research, we found out it was only Charlie Watson. They were way back, we heard it that way. So the other name came from another side of town. That Meredith found out, we both found. So we wanted that road to be named C M Watsons.
Okay. So we didn't cover this in the last one. So there was conversation had here shortly after the last meeting. Um, at least what I was thinking of, is the intention was for that to be one street, one name. Um, our, our department even said that is more suitable for first responders or postal workers because how close it is, even though it doesn't make that exact tick, what we talked about at the last meeting. Um, we discussed the Crawford name actually came from, if you look on slide twelve on yours, was actually just east of what was the Charlie Watson Estates that was subdivided back in eighty one. So in their um, conversation with Maurice was, um, there was some conversation with a couple that previously opposed it.
Yes.
Um, and they no longer do?
That's correct. You sent a letter and they, they no longer.
And my neighbors, they, they, to me, and they said, it don't matter now because, you know, it's a heritage land, you know what I'm saying? That's what it, whatever it be filed with them.
So do you have a letter, a letter to you from them?
No, I don't have a letter. That's my, he's my neighbor.
Well, they, they were listed, not even the agent. You look, the city of Lawrence listed that the agent involved with Jimmy and mine, who was the agent in, city of Lawrence was the agent, I understand.
Right.
So they were either agent, or that was the question, the city of Lawrence was the question.
So without, so essentially we um, without having something written right from the ones that opposed it previously, proposed, opposed the further name change, we'll have to post it, formally post it with public hearing.
That's, that's fine, but we went through that before.
That's right, fine, right. So that way everybody has notice to, to be able to come in and speak, to give their thoughts on it.
If you'd have told me that last month, we'd have had them here. You told me that long as they didn't oppose it, they didn't oppose it because it didn't come.
But we needed an advice.
Right, for me to collect that or for the city to.
From them. If they gave it, you and you gave it to mayor, they said.
It was not the agent, the city of Lawrence was the agent.
But they didn't have that conversation with us.
Okay, but they didn't request it from the start. What I'm saying, the agents, we are one agent and the city of Lawrence is the agent, not their votes. You, you got a, of yours, agent.
But we wouldn't reach out to them to verify if they still posed it on that.
I'm missing something. If you were the agent, as it listed on there, you were the agent, the city of Lawrence. That they didn't have no say so, the other agent was Jimmy Watson, from Hudson. They didn't have any say so in that because that agent of city of Lawrence recommended, not them. Is that not?
So it was approved by the land commission based on staff feedback and public opinion, public opinion with that at that time. At that time, their public opinion opposed, they were fine with Crawford, but any other change, they were done with, essentially, is what they said that new. So anything different from that, we would have to give from them.
Okay, but wouldn't they be listed as the agent, not the city of Lawrence?
No, because they're not requesting the change. They're not initiating that change on them.
We didn't initiate a change. The city of Lawrence asked us about changing because of nine one one. We didn't initiate the change. You did. The city of Lawrence did.
Can we, can we get in with your questions?
Yes, please.
Uh, if, yes, sir.
Yes. They said that if the name had been changed, it calls, it's a Watson Street already. All right, I'm looking at, right, I got a road for me, it's a Cox Road, it's a Cox Street. Then right over here, it's a Cox Road. Then right up on the little piece up there, it's a North Cox Road. That's three names, three different places. But you couldn't do Watson, you know what I'm saying? Watson, Watson Drive and Watson Street. You couldn't do that, but you had three different names. Watson Street is off right off Main Street, Watson, no, Cox Road. Cox Street is off from Main Street. And you got Cox Road, right there, right at old um, C and citizens building. Then right past that little piece, you got North Cox.
That's true.
And exactly.
That's true. That's three different names, about the same. But it was just a Watson Street and a Watson Drive, right over here. You know, but I don't understand either.
Do you understand the analyst got to come to you?
Huh?
Do you understand the analyst got to come to you?
And analysts, we really need to see a drop of drive to the thing, and even put it, put it there on, on the, on the thing.
GPS.
GPS, they're telling you. Same way they say Cox Street, Watson Drive, Watson, it's a Cox Road, Cox Drive, oh, they were telling you.
But my whole purposes to begin with was, um, was once, there's something logged or something with a very similar, like same, same name that was pulling to logs. So that, I mean, that was the whole.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a different zip code.
I'm saying that's right, I mean, that's.
You know what I'm saying, that's a different, whole different zip code.
But that's, that's where, I mean, it's not our first time seeing you here, but we, we went over this a couple of months ago. We went over it, I think, a long over time after that, we finally talked about what we named it Crawford, the one that was the left.
That was the, essentially ended being found the compromise between that actor.
But I'm just now finding out about these different roads, these three roads right here.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I know.
We don't have, we don't have everything available here, and, uh, you know, I, I don't know about those three different Cox.
My, my thing was, it was said it was historical for, for a background. The historical value of it was Charlie Watson Estate. Back in the thirties, it was Charlie Watson Estate. She told at the last meeting that it was a historical, they named it.
Crawford.
Crawford. Which I found, went researching, it's no Crawford, there's no history behind Crawford. If it's going to name Crawford, then the name was said, no, that was given to them from the city. That's why I just want to clarify. If the city, the agent, right, the city came up with that, city came up with three different names. But it came up and did Charlie Watson, she said, couldn't name it Charlie Watson. Really? Because we got a name. That's why we came up with C M Charlie Martin Watson, C M Watson, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And don't understand the historical, that's why I was questioning the historical behind camp. There's none, there's not the connection.
Okay, so we're going to have to check into of minutes. We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into the next item, P L dash two zero two four one zero dash zero one. Review of the major subdivision from Marlowe Farms. Is the agent here?
Yes.
And did you come? So what you're saying from us is, so that would be, Patrick, are you wanting to do the final plan?
Right.
Okay. So the final plan, so it's similar to the D R Horton one where they did final plan so they can subdivide the property and start building. We may have some follow-up questions, just on our procedures with it as far as dealing with the infrastructure side. Our ordinance has that the, in order to subdivide the parcel into this, is you either have to have the infrastructure in place or you do an improvement guarantee for that infrastructure so that you could get the final plan to start building the lots. We can repress that. I know we've, we've had some backing boys to make sure that everything we're meeting, every box that we have, it's checked. Um, I've not seen any issue. I think I actually still got the names, the street names reserved for the county from the board from last time. Um, I'll go back and double check, make sure she does still have those reserved. And I don't have really anything else that normally they can trace to break at everything.
So all the answers from Tom's email, the walk-in office has been cleared and he has no other, okay? Actually, one hundred percent.
And that's why this is took a little bit of time to get back to it, so that everything was first with it on my side. So our next step would be to go ahead and give the recommendation. Um, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't make a recommendation on this either approved it or not agreed or conditionally approved. Um, because we don't have some dealing more with the infrastructure, what sort of hours far as getting it on yet. We could hold until the next meeting and get those documents together, make sure we've got that sorted out, there's no question, there's no surprise. And then we can do your, the letter so that it can be subdivided without looking, if nothing else, the conditional. What is what they're like, that's what you think?
Yeah, we need to move ahead. What is it, we're saying now?
Improvement guarantee for the industry.
Is that why it should be on Lenar after they close? Because they'll be hiring the infrastructure agents and they'll be following that. But we're selling it to them prior to infrastructure beginning. So that's why if we delay it, we just, we can't really get to the finish line because we're not going to be the ones responsible for the bond, Lenar is. Now, should they not close, you know, we've got to move forward to finish the lots, though of course we would do it, but to be honest, we would probably turn that deal to work and let them get finished.
So you could do, um,
conditional based on, um, that Lenar is going to follow through.
You can do a conditional approval, um, and if I remember correctly, Lenar actually would warn us to be bringing here, take this all to.
That's right, right.
It was actually Thomas cutting the video for it to go off there, so you can communicate to Lenar. So if we can, if we can issue a critical decision, we should go forward, we can go through some letters.
So we kind of leave the approval letter from you guys, also appears. This letter first, actually give it something on your team, it always goes on the floor, and they'll turn around and you have the bond, logic, fact. Also making it a bond, it's like on a D S T.
Excuse me. Please, thank you.
So you and Meredith are kind of working hard together, I didn't know what the question was.
Um, I do have a question for you, so. All right, so the H O A, you don't have this.
Yeah, well, see, none of that would be done yet because again, Lenar would be the actual developer. We're basically selling the land and approval of hundred six lots. After that, it's all.
And, um, all right, so. Um, number seventeen had roads and drainage. Yeah, roads and drainage, the divisionary, it's a big public, it's a, it's a, it must take a thought of us, is what's listed on there. Um, so I do know at the moment, um, the city is not really accepting roads for maintenance yet, so that may.
What's happening on the D R Horton, do they stay in private? They are.
Yes, yes, those are private. No, that's not, it's not saying that they could in the future, but at the moment, at this time right now.
You've been working on it for two years, two, two, it's years on the little, I'm nervous, those day, but what I thought I would. what I thought I remember from Mr. Wilson, we were talking, that, uh, the drainage plan was surely was taken over, that we thought that Lori County would actually take care of the storm water. So I guess my question, if that's true, would it be possible that we do a dedication to the county and let them take their roads?
So we're, um, actually, kind of, in the process of, um, I don't know, mutual is the right term for it, but working together.
Working on.
With it, yeah. So whether it's, it's drainage management that they obtain, or we obtain, we make sure there's some language there to where they can utilize ours, if we were giving drainage investments.
And we've already known, we had to do that on that piece, because we'd have been, it was building up, get rid of floating, because of the treatment, so so we gave it easements, and they went in there and cleaned, in fact, it might be. I worked with one, were really close to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can get that. So basically, to get us to move forward to close, so you guys can get the bond for the roads and privacy from Lennar, that's why we need the approval for basically the, the zoning is approved. And then, if we have that, then we can go ahead and close to them, and then they can supply you with bonds and everything for private roads. Now, I have to let them know that about the private road, I, I wasn't aware that, that we could private that. The way, the way this county does it, which I agree and disagree with some of the way they do that, but it's a three-year sure, surety bond. That we do a subdivision, we do finish lots, we have to put up surety bond, that, that, that basically, should the detention pond fail, should the concrete crack on the curb, we have a three years that we have to be responsible for fixing, so I, I'm not sure where the city, how they can work that trust factor.
And we have some of that, um, I'll double check the improvement.
And I don't know if you guys do this, but maybe something to think about is, um, with these nationals, the way they roll themselves, is actually getting a development letter with them, once you take the sign, and you guys are doing the pre-meetings, you can actually form a development letter, pretty, be pretty forceful with them, with what you would like as far as, we, we give degrees base. You know, they're, they're pretty receptive to, but then, of course, you know, they're going to ask for stuff to, to the street. But, um, but normally, a couple I've done, back in town, back where the river is, they kind of work, work together, you know, it's kind of like a a couple step process.
So you're clarifying all of this, what he's asking. All right, so you've already got the zoning for that, and what I'm seeing here means that zoning district, because this was one that was approved, then they requested rezoning to match more of the lot size of GR Horton. So it went from R one four to R one five. Biggest difference being ten thousand hundred foot wide lots versus eight thousand square foot, eighty foot wide lots. The density is about to stay the same with it, um, you know, up, up a couple, down a couple, it wasn't really, it, it was not a drastic change at all. Um, the overall layout is very similar to what was previously approved. You could do a conditional approval with those Adams concerns being addressed prior to a final plan, just that letter served as for them to move forward on the D O T side? Would that work?
Yeah, I, I don't know if they need a, what's called a full approval or a additional approval, I, I probably jumped mad on that. But just to say what we did on the, on those lots, when she was talking about the change, I actually knew Tom from the county, so being in that contact, I had it, and, because I am a hydrologist, and so what we did, what we're going to have on the bonds, we made them longer, and used the, the eight and fifty with. Because what I found on those subdivision I've done is, the back yards, if you get too much slope going down through the weather, that creates problems, if you have a short squatty lot, so we made it a point to make all the exterior lots longer, so we have less gradual, so the finished product everybody's happy.
And that was the concern.
And that was, that was really the only concern, we, we, we worked it out, we went back to what priority and just to give you approval here, and just kind of, we kind of all put our heads together and got it, with that, put a plan out, and we all liked.
So the conditional would be that company that's going to.
Right, Lennar, that they would be responsible for that bond.
Yeah, that, um, the conditional approval would be that, um, being a proven guarantee gets the same rest gets, um, satisfied with the city.
Would it be possible to say, do the full approval with that in there, so that it looks to the D O T like we got a full approval, but I'm just not sure if Lindsay's going to accept that as a conditional.
Lindsay with D O T?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so the only issue is, as far as full approval, our definition's full approval would mean that you could take it to the county court or register deeds and have it stamped, reported as a subdivision.
Right.
The lots, lot of that.
But I'm saying, couldn't we do that, because that's really what we're after as a final plan, with the understanding that when the, the company, uh, seller closes, when they actually close the developer, national closes, we have it in that, uh, final approval that, that they're required to do the bond up to your level for, for private credits. Is it possible, I'm just trying to say if we could put that one thing in there to cover you guys, but at the same time, get the paper trail so that we don't have a delay to where we got to come back here and get, and get that done anyway, because Lindsay won't sign off on the additional, you know how that's, that's my concern. But I felt like, you know, if we could do a full approval and put that one amendment in there stating that this is all good and approved unless Lennar or the national, the buyer defaults, and then we can get back to where we want, yes.
And see, that's where I know City Council has to have, they have to approve that, like they did with the DR Horton one, and we have to have that signed, accepted, before any of it can be certified. Or the infrastructure that in first, whichever way that you get, take the infrastructure in first, we wouldn't have to have any type of improvement guarantee, because that's essentially what the improvement guarantee is, is they're putting up that money to get this infrastructure done, that they're doing, they get that money back.
That they're responsible for, it's wrong.
Well, they get that money back upon completion.
Right.
But if they don't complete it, they just leave town, or leave it like it is, then that's what that improvement is for, is for the city to use that money to actually complete the project. Right, complete the, and it's only for the infrastructure. I don't think we can, we would be, I mean, we wouldn't be able to do a full approval without that. And.
If, if we get a conditional approval, though, could, could we still have a final plan for?
Not without the.
See, that's worse. So we've got one, we won't let the other happen without that, because it's, I want to have you all work that.
Yeah, I know, because they didn't have any issues with that, I mean, um, we could do it, we.
Seems like if we've done all the steps, that we could go ahead and have the approval, understanding the research, final fact of course, that would allow Lennar to close, and then Lennar would be responsible to answer to you guys as far as roads or anything else for that. Again, that's where, I think, the development letter between you and the national.
Mary, what's missing from this packet for us to not do? So essentially, it is the improvement guarantee portion of that, but. We have to have that. Yeah. With that, I mean, that, that is, if the infrastructure is not there, because that's where that has been left out in certain subdivisions in the past, we have to have that.
I understand, what if I got this, um, what if we could do an approval, and then Randy Wallace is on the other side of this with Lennar, I got Randy, and see if we could get a document from Lennar stating that they understand that they have to do this, complete, have, make a sign. Make you feel comfortable.
Now, that's, um, I do know with the other project, um, the entity that did the improvement guarantee with the city was not the same entity as the part with that. And that worked with it, essentially, we bring entities.
Yeah, Thompson Button did that as the engineer. No, we're going to close, maybe they just helped, well, they work in the end with the DR Horton, so they're already, they're almost the same, they probably had an internal between, but they use, I don't think Matt can sign up, that's, he's, he's a small guy. But maybe I could get a document, like I said, from Lennar, because we got to get another one on this, uh, on, on D O T.
Is, is there anything specific that D O T's asking or wanting verified?
Well, we've done everything, no, we've already answered everything, and it's all complete and signed off, except the bond, and we've gone to Lennar, should have it any day, that they are going to, uh, to then contract, they will be responsible for that seventy thousand pound to the C D O T. And that's what I was thinking, if I, if I get that done, maybe it'd be the same thing for you guys, I could get another memorandum, letter stating that, uh, they are in place for the infrastructure.
We've not amended to allow.
What's that?
We've not amended the ordinance to allow.
Well, not amended, I, I, I'm not trying to amend, I'm saying, when I say amendment, I mean, real estate business, I'm talking about more of, um, just approve of a do, a document, a proof.
You're referring to an identity, no, I'm saying, our regulations haven't been updated to allow different things like that now. So that's what we're having to go off of, and our witness still says, you've either got to have the infrastructure in place, or you've got to have an improvement guarantee in order to sign off the final plan, because essentially, the final plan is allowing that, those parcels to be subdivided into what's being shown there.
Right. And that's what they want, to close one hundred and sixty. So that's what I'm trying to figure out is how we. Well, I mean.
I mean, our next meeting would be April twenty fourth.
Well, that's what I was getting, what I meant, April twenty fourth. So what if we did a conditional approval? And meantime, I have a letter for the next meeting from Lennar stating that they, or even have it done by them, literally have them, so the thing is, they may not sign up for the bond, because they own the property.
I think so too, because there's, there's a lot going on. I mean, we could, we could do, I mean, we could do like the zoning verification that the proposal is in line with the zoning ordinance, and then list the things that were needed.
Why, why don't we do the conditional approval with the zoning language in there, and go ahead and have it in there that this conditional based on, or this final approval is based on Lennar delivering the bond for the infrastructure, something to that effect.
I don't think we can either, I, I know you don't want to wait another month, but I think.
No, I know, I was trying to wait another month, I'm, I'm okay, what I'm trying to do, though, is have the right paperwork in the right order, so that we don't have another delay.
Right, but we don't want to be responsible for making approval, uh, for something we don't have all the information for. For it to be, we're going to do a, a conditional approval for this, but it still sign off to be recorded, subdivided, that's what it's just things like. What do y'all think? Actually, we reschedule to the next meeting, depending. And then hopefully, you can get all the cheese, of course, the eyes done. Okay, sir.
So we got a conditional, we got this table?
Wait until I will schedule a meeting, office with you two.
To figure out.
Get everything that we're needing with it, based on how our ordinance is working, right? And then get that up, I mean, we're, I don't necessarily see an issue, it's just making sure we have.
Yeah, we just got to get it in the right order.
Right.
So we can, so you can do a.
That's right, yeah. The next item is, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Next item is staff report. I'm giving you, in there, I've noted, um, our next set of dates to remember. Uh, well, before I go into that, we talked briefly before on the, once overlay zoning is kind of what we're calling it, whenever you have a property that has special features, wetlands, floodplains, um, certain restrictions that might make it a little bit challenged to develop subdivisions with it, um, we'll be discussing that in the near future, some of our next meetings will be what all do we want to include with it? This wouldn't necessarily be that you're rezoning your property to that, it would kind of be conditions or allowances, modifications that are allowed, you have to request that as similar to a rezoning, but essentially, that would attach to your property, so if it's a setback reduction, or something like that with it, you may have to, you can allow a twenty-five percent reduction, but you've got to increase your overall lot size with it. More open space, different things like that, but that's kind of in the air, so we're wanting to be back, correct y'all, and some of the city councils, as far as what they're going to do, so they will give us some misinformation that we can be, be. Yeah, and we'll probably have time, some of the upcoming meetings to go with the one that, probably him and Desrae, because I'm with it, um. I've not gotten, um, an updated sheet as far as the annual rate, like the year per century, I asked, well, I'm already saying for it, but I've not seen it yet. Um, it has been redetted so far, twenty twenty-five, I hope it doesn't stay like that the rest of the year, but we're making it, um, so the dates that I've got, turning around, we've got City Council, seven. Our next deadline is how I've got this listed, so the next submission deadline, or application, so if somebody wants to there, everything's ready, they want to submit it to us, because it's something that y'all have to approve or make recognition on. That next deadline is April second, and the earliest meeting, the application that's submitted by April second, if we heard before y'all, the county city, it's going to be at the naming. And that gives us enough time for most part to go back to the meeting, and any concerns, make sure that we've got all our information, y'all. Our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, and city, I was planning for good progress. Nothing else, so I can go back to the seat. And then it's very good. So we have public press comments? Anybody in the public or present for this, or this, or this?
Just one question, how do I get a copy of just the last two minutes, a few meetings on the dates, and then a, a copy of the recording, y'all be recording these?
Cheers.
Okay, how do I go back?
So they, um, you can go back and pull the actual video on YouTube, if you go to see it, or explain the question.
Well, can I get a written copy of, of the minutes?
Yes, as soon as those are approved, those are available on the website.
I, I understand, but I can get a written copy from you, or from the city itself.
So once, once the minutes are drafted. So once, once the minutes are drafted.
Yes.
And they're presented to planning commissions, or in Phil's city council, whichever board, those minutes are born. Once they're approved by them, then it, it can be given out.
Public record.
Yeah, but they have to be approved first.
But the last three or four months, that should be done.
I'm working.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? So do I hear a motion for adjournment? Hang on a second, just a second. All the babies say aye?
Aye.
Do you have a toast?
Thank you.
Thank you.